Good evening. Welcome to the regular Crescent City Council meeting for Monday, July 18, 2011. And Mr. Black, do you have anything to report out of closed session?
No, Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Very good, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Shalong. Councilmember Westphal. And Mayor Slert.
I'm here, thank you. Ms. Westphal, would you listen to the pledge this evening?
(inaudible)
I thought, before we get started tonight, there were a couple announcements. First, I would welcome everybody that's here in person and then everybody that's live streaming tonight with us. And I'm glad to say that I'm back from a week in LA.
And that's far away.
And it absolutely reminds me of all the reasons why people move to Crescent City. On so many levels, I can't even tell you. And then, on top of everything, I was caught in Carmageddon, if you didn't hear about that. That was closing the 405 freeway for 10 miles in LA for supposedly like 50 some hours. And I avoided it, I'm happy to say, but at a high price. So, I would say, welcome, and it's good to be back home. And Ms. Shalong, you had a couple things?
Yeah, I, a couple things. Sure, Mayor Slert just reminded me that Suzy Williams, on the ice cream lady, passed away. And so, but it would be, before I talk about my friend, it'd be nice to, um, so. And my longtime friend, Harvey Anderson, who lived in Crescent City for 25 years, and was, worked at the Delaware County Basketball Club for about 22 years, and ran our eighth grade J C basketball tournament, and then were part of it for almost 44 years. A tournament that affected thousands of children's lives, and was a huge economic boost to our city, passed away. And I was very honored to be with him when he passed away. And, he, he has a service today, and I just came from that. So, he raised a lot of our community people, and was just such a great asset to our community. He's really going to be my, 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 my moment of service.
Okay. This evening, we have no acknowledgements. Consent calendar, we have three items. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 6, July, and July 5, 2011, Crescent City Council meetings. Item number four, the approval of warrant claims list for the period July 6 through July 18, 2011. And item five, approval of bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending July 2, paid July 8, 2011.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor?
I have some corrections.
Very well.
On the June 6, minutes, page six, item number 15, it refers to some questions submitted by her city resident. Eileen Cooper is now a county resident. And then on the minutes from July 5, page three, almost to the end, about six, seven sentences up from the bottom, indicating people feel that the use rates, it should be user rates. And on page four, second paragraph, public hearing, John Grayson should be John Janßen, Felt that we need to come to common ground and ask the government to compromise. Further down, about five from the bottom, the city cannot reduce specific position salaries. I believe interim city manager Gala Tioto mentioned it would be a process that takes seven months. And those are the corrections I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so I don't.
Councilmember Westphal, could you specify what we're talking about, because I missed the second part? Tuesday, July 5's meeting?
Right, on page four.
Page four.
After the public hearing was closed, we were talking at ways to eliminate having to increase the sewer rate increases by looking at things like payroll and benefits reductions. And you stated costs have been reduced by not refilling positions, however, the city cannot reduce specific position salaries. And I think you also mentioned that if we were to go back to the union, it would be a process that could take about seven months?
I think she said several.
Or was that several?
Several or seven, it would be, probably end up being around the same amount. It'll take several.
All right.
Up to.
So, would you like the minutes to reflect seven or several? Not that it?
I think it's, if it's okay with Ms. Westphal, I think several.
Several, okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. And welcome back, Ms. City Clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we will, that's right. All those, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. So, at this time, we will move to item number six on our agenda. And we will convene as the Crescent City Housing Authority. And, Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are all present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, at this time, we would take public comment for the Housing Authority. Is there any? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and then move to the consent calendar for the Housing Authority. Two items, to approve a regular meeting minutes of June 20, 2010, I think that's probably 2011.
I'm sorry about that.
Of the Crescent City Housing Authority, and then approve the warrant claims list for the period of June 21, 2011, to July 18 of 2011.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. And the Housing Director, we will have, receive a report from the Executive Director regarding the 2011 funding renewal notification.
Yes.
Ms. Megan.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you guys kind of an update on what's happening with our funding situation. We did receive our funding renewal notification for 2011 on June 14. Unfortunately, it came in a little lower than what we were hoping for. We were anticipating that our 2011 renewal funding would be based on our calendar year 2010 hap expenses. And in the end, they changed the look-back period to prior fiscal year. So, that was a disadvantage to us because that period of time encompassed the funding shortfall that we had in 2009, which therefore brought down our overall average that we were eligible to be renewed at for 2011. Additionally, they are reducing our monthly disbursements from July through December to recoup the money that they overpaid us for the first six months of the year. So, while they were determining what the funding was going to be renewed at, they were advancing us our disbursements at an amount that was higher than what we ended up being allocated in the end. So, we get to June, and we don't know what we're supposed to be spending, January, February, March, et cetera. So, they are offsetting our disbursements for July through December by the amount that we were overpaid. The real challenge is that this is all happening in the midst of some, some big reductions that are happening at the state level. So, the state of California has reduced SSI and cachet benefits across the board, which has really impacted our program costs. Whenever a participant's income goes down, the housing payment goes up. And 85% of our, our client base is a recipient of either SSI or cachet. So, you can imagine the, the impact that, that we are taking is huge. We're going to have an increase to 85% of our program. So, we have applied for set-aside funding. We applied in three different categories, and we qualify in all three categories. We applied in unforeseen circumstances, which was specifically relating to the situation with the state. Higher-cost portability, which I think we talked about the last meeting, where we are paying out higher costs on people that have transferred to other areas. And additional leasing, which means that our current averages are higher than the averages used in the re-benchmarking period. So, the variable is going to be how many housing authorities put in for the set-aside. There's $149 million available, and I think that we are, we will, my feeling is we're probably going to get enough to carry us through the remainder of 2011 without having to make any changes to our program. Because even if we only got half of what we requested and what we qualified for, that would be more than enough to get us through. But we won't know, because I was thinking we would probably hear about the set-aside by the end of July, but I spoke with someone at HUD today who told me that it's looking like it could be closer to mid-August. So, until then, we really can't make any plans as to where we're going to go, because there's such a big part of the equation that is unknown to us, which is, which is what the set-aside amount is going to be. We do have plans, backup plans, in the event that the amount the set-aside is awarded is not sufficient to carry us through. In a worst-case scenario, what we would be probably looking at is another payment standard waiver, which is what we did in 2009. It's a marginal reduction to each client across the board for a temporary period of time, probably three months. That's a worst-case scenario. So, we're not there yet. We're waiting until we hear about the set-aside, and then we'll, we will proceed from there. With all that being said, we obviously aren't going to be bringing any new families on until the end of, of this funding cycle, the beginning of the next one, which would be January 2012. We did have 15 families lined up that were going to enter the program for July, August, and September. When we got to about late March, early April, we started realizing, okay, we're not, we haven't heard on our funding renewal notification, so we were limiting our new admissions to five per month, just trying to hold steady where we were at. And when we did receive the renewal notification in, in mid-June, we realized these 15 families in the queue, we just can't, we can't bring them on. Our, our funding is not going to allow for it. So, we reached out to our colleagues at Community Assistance Network, the HARP program. And thankfully, they had funding immediately available, and so we were able to align those 15 impacted families with the HARP program. And they took them on until we are able to, which, which worked out perfectly and was, was an ideal solution for everyone. So, that's where we're at. I just wanted to keep you guys posted. I wish I could tell you exactly what we're going, what we're going to do and where we're going to go from here, but I won't know until I hear about the set-aside funds.
Great. Any questions or clarifications on the part of the Council?
I have a question for our city attorney. As you know, we own rental properties, and I've had two people approach us on the HARP program. And I know, as an elected official, we're not allowed to have anybody on HUD. Do you know if that also applies to HARP?
I, I don't believe so. The HARP program is administered by what agency?
Can. Can.
Still, that doesn't disqualify you as a member of the Council. That's a, you don't have any control over how those funds are allocated as a, as a Council member.
Thank you.
Therefore, I don't see a conflict.
Any other questions or clarifications?
I just wanted to thank you, Megan, for being right on top of this. This report was very thorough, so thank you for that. My, my big concern is, so we, we won't be able to accept anybody until next year. Do you think that that's going to impact our community very adversely? What's your assessment on how, what will happen there?
I, I haven't heard too much complaining from people, members of the public, about the long wait. So, I think that because of the HARP program, we've, we've referred a lot of people over there. And that has helped us tremendously in terms of, because our program is a long wait associated with it. It's more of a permanent solution, but it's, there's a longer wait involved. And HARP has funds that are immediately available. And so, a lot of times, we've kind of arranged it the way we have this time, where we can refer people for immediate need, and then they can use the HARP assistance until our assistance is available to them. So, I think without, without having that in place, yes, this would have a bigger, would have had a bigger impact on the community than what we're looking at right now.
That was very, a very good move on your part, and thank you to Can.
Thank you.
My other question is, if we don't raise the federal debt ceiling, there had been discussions that the Social Security incomes would be stopped. And do we, have we reached out to the property owners to talk about that at all? I mean, I'm hoping that that won't happen.
Oh, so am I. No, we haven't. I, I don't even know what would happen in a situation like that.
Devastating.
It would be. And it would be, it's one of these other areas of uncertainty where unless we knew that was going to happen, we wouldn't be able to implement that change for those people. We can't reduce their rent because we think they might have a decrease. So, it would be, you know, after the fact, if, if it happened beginning of next month or.
Or third.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that that doesn't happen.
Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Please.
Megan, does the Housing Authority have the capacity to waive the tenant participation on a short-term basis? Let's say that income stops, but you could still pay the Housing Authority's share to the individual landlords and maybe get through a month that way?
At the level that, with their reduced income, if they lose their SSI?
Well, not to, not to readjust. I don't think, it seems unlikely that people would lose their Social Security check entirely. It would be a question of when the federal government could be operational to make that up. And so, I'm wondering if there's the flexibility to waive the, the tenant's share. I know the tenant is expected to pay their share.
Yeah.
Right away.
I, I don't think that's something we would have control over. I think that would have to be up to the landlord, because that landlord is the one accepting the rent.
But the Housing Authority would still issue its individual checks?
Yes.
To the landlords?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions, clarifications? Good report, Megan.
Thank you.
Clearly, our Housing Authority is being affected directly by the higher cost for the out-of-town people that you brought to us a meeting or two ago, that it's having a direct effect in your ability to manage the funds and the monies to help the people in need here first.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, thanks for that report. We have no public hearing. At this time, we have no continuing business and no new business, so we will adjourn till the next regular scheduled meeting for the Housing Authority, August 15, at 6:00 p.m. And so, we will move to now convene the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, item number seven on the agenda. And Madam Chair, if you'll have the record reflect that, Madam Clerk, if you'll have the record reflect that the Chair and Directors are present?
Yes, sir.
And is there any public comment for Redevelopment Agency this evening?
Can we use a public comment after they talk? In case you had a question?
No, it's only a public comment before at this time. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to the consent calendar. And there.
I would like to add a letter.
Oh, thank you. I thought it was on. I'd like to add an emergency item to the agenda. The League of California Cities, the California Redevelopment Association, and two additional cities actually filed lawsuit today to, in the State Supreme Court to overturn the unconstitutional redevelopment elimination legislation. And the City, League of Cities has asked us to sign an urgent letter to Assemblymember Chesbrough and Senator Noreen Evans, both who voted in favor of eliminating RDAs. And so, I have a letter from California League of Cities for us to put in our information and send out. And that letter would talk to them about our concerns about their vote, and also support the lawsuit that's being filed.
Very good. So, is that a motion?
It's a motion to add that to the agenda, please.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you pull it up, please?
Certainly. Director Westphal?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Ania?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
And Chairman Slert.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. So, that'll be added, and we will get those letters out.
Great.
For the Council. Thank you. So, we have a consent calendar for approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 20, 2011, of the City of Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, and item two, approval of warrant claims list of June 21, 2011, to July 18, 2011.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously also. There's no Executive Director's report, there's no business items at this time, there's no public hearing, but there are a couple new business items. Item number three is to consider and approve the suspension of redevelopment funding and authorize the mayor to sign letters to the projects, project representatives. And Madam Mayor Protem Murray, I'm going to recuse myself. And I also wanted to verify that perhaps the letters should have another title other than the mayor, so that I don't sign those documents.
Very good.
Okay? You're in good hands.
Make it the Vice Mayor.
We could make it the City Manager.
Or Mayor Protem.
Okay, so, would you like to?
Unfortunately, tonight, I'm requesting that you suspend redevelopment funding that you approved for the Eileen and Hector Brown project on Highway 101 South, and the Lighthouse Repertory Theater renovation project, and authorize sending attached letters that we will change with Ms. Murray's name or with the Executive Director, which would be my name.[1799.73] name, on the letter. Subsequent to the redevelopment agency meeting held on June 29th, when we scurried to make sure that we expended the funds that we had on hand, that was the same day, same night, actually, that the governor signed the legislation. So we found out subsequent to that meeting that all contractual obligations had to be prior to the 29th and could not be on the 29th. And this was for funding that was already available. This was, so also, excuse me, both the legislation requires that the city or the redevelopment agency decide before October, so that you can have an ordinance, or by November 1st have an ordinance in place, either to eliminate the RDAs, this is if the legal stop actions basically do not occur, or continue. The city finance director and myself have met with the county, we're meeting with the county again tomorrow with the auditor controller, to look at giving you exactly what we're looking at, should you continue paying the ransom, or whether or not you're better off, if you only have these two choices, whether dissolution will be better in your best interest. And it may be, because the, at this point, it appears that $425,000 is the ransom amount that's estimated. But that's what the League of Cities is basically estimating our ransom at. But as of right now, they're asking, we're asking that you suspend the two fundings for both the Hector, Eileen, Brown project and for the Lighthouse Repertory Theater. Only suspend them until we have better information. You can't expend the funds anyway, but we're not asking you to say no. What we're asking you to do is just put them in abeyance, basically, until we have better information to know what we can do. What still is not known is what you can do with funding that you have, or money, not funding, but actual funds that you have available, is what, and that's what we had committed to both of these projects. We didn't commit future funding, we committed funds that were on hand. And that's not clear at this point. So tonight, I'm asking you to do that. And basically, in the next few months, we should have some clarity as to what is really going to happen with the funds. One of the funds, big pot of funds that we're looking at is your set aside money. If the RDA should go away, both RDAs go away, they're eliminated, Mr. McDonald and I are looking at, is there the possibility that you could pay off the loans with the set aside funds that you have available now? And then basically, your debt service would be almost complete within a year or 18 months. You probably feel comfortable that we would be able to eliminate your debt, and then the property tax coming back to the city. We don't know what exactly that amount yet, but you would be better off. You might be better off. So those are some of the things. Also, Clint Shad, who is the auditor controller, he provided us, you know, he's getting information too, on the county side, and the state controller's side, and the department of finance, about how to set up these sub-accounts and successor agencies, and all of the things that these, both of this, this legislation basically is mandating that occur. But what we don't know is exactly that allocation and what's coming off the top, and what we're all, what we're going to pay in administrative fees, and who the successor agency is. There's a lot of unknowns, and it seems like a very short period of time, we're going to have to know a lot. Within the next 60 days, I would say, you're going to have to know quite a bit. Because by October, if you decide to, the redevelopment agencies, if you want to continue with them, under the current legislation, if the legal actions don't halt the process, then essentially, we're going, you're going to have to make that decision by October, because you'll have to put an ordinance in place to either, to continue. In the meantime, I'm asking you to suspend these two projects till we know what we're dealing with.
This isn't just your recommendation, is it?
No, I'm sorry. It's also the, it's the recommendation of your redevelopment attorney, Iris Yang, and your redevelopment consultant, Mr. Davidson. And we have every intention to continue to work with both parties, to try to come to a solution. And I don't believe either party's project is going to halt in the, between now and the next 60 days because of this action.
Any comments or questions from the directors? I'd like to open this up to public comment, then. Is there anybody who has a public comment? If you do, please step up to the podium, state your name, and if you're a city or county resident, for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Was that two minutes, ma'am?
Three.
Three minutes, thank you.
I'm Joan Buehler, and I'm a resident of the city. I'm also president of Lighthouse Repertory Theater. I was not here for the last meeting when you graciously allowed us to have the $14,000 for permits and hookup fees and so forth, which would have helped us immensely. However, and I was in, having surgery, so. Anyway, I want to thank the city council for being on ball to help us out for that. And I understand that it's not a dead issue, that you're still going to work for us. Anyway, I want to thank the city council very much for your efforts and for your thoughts. We are working on our building. If you've noticed, the overhang has been repaired, and we're doing work on that. With our two-for-one money that we got, we managed to reach $75,000, and we've got it all allocated, what we're going to do with it. We're going to weatherize our building, so that it won't decay anymore. But anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Glad to see you here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your understanding. It's kind of disheartening, but we haven't given up hope yet.
Well, Janine was correct. We are not at the point where we're going to need the money for permits and hookups and so forth. But eventually, we will, and we'll hope this matter will be settled by then. Thank you.
And they still could use donations, by the way. I will, any other public comment?
This is about anything, right?
No, this is regarding the redevelopment.
Not the sewer extension project?
This is the redevelopment agency. There's an, agenda's right up there, if you want to, if it'll help you to follow. Any other public comment, then, on the redevelopment agency matters? If not, I will bring it back to the directors?
I'd like to just mention that Randy Baugh made a phone call to me. I told him I would get back to him, and I have not yet. So my bad, but I had a few things happen in the last week. But he wanted to make note that he was disappointed that we did not consider his project. And I couldn't answer all of his questions, but if you could give him a call and talk to him about his project.
You need a motion for, or approval for the letters, then?
I would move to approve, to approve the letters as recommended by staff to go out to the two project representatives to suspend the funding agreed upon.
Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Enya?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Murray?
Yes. And with that, I believe we can bring Director Slert back in. Thank you, Donna. And go on to item 4A, oh, excuse me, 4B, consider and approve a certificate of acceptance regarding the property located at 655 H Street.
What about 4A?
Oh, 4A, I'm sorry.
4A? Okay. Item 4A, consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution 2011-34, a resolution of the Redevelopment Agency approving the purchase of property known as 655 H Street, APN number 118-170-02.
This is part of the completion of the, of purchasing the property known as the El Patio Motel. And we are required to have a resolution, basically a certificate of acceptance.
So...
And this is paid with set aside funds.
Okay, so the June 29th date doesn't apply?
Because, and that's why we're really specific, this process actually started at a time when
Right.
I had already signed off on the, on the escrow, and started the process.
Mm-hmm.
Or we would be in the same situation.
Are there any questions by the council, clarifications? Okay. Is there any public comments regarding item 4A? Okay, back to the council for action.
One question, I'm sorry. What would the plan be once we secure title to the property for demolition?
Well, initially, our thought was that we were going to use redevelopment funds, but since those are basically frozen at this point, we've been looking at what it would actually cost for city force account to do it, and do, have the volunteer fire department basically take care of it. I think we've spent maybe less than $2,000, $2,000 on checking for asbestos and lead. And once we get that analysis done... Yeah, and as soon as we know those results, then we will have to estimate what the cost will be to have that particular portion removed before they burn. But our thought is to do this with force account and with volunteers.
And then is it to clear the site?
Yes. And then have a developer eventually come with
An RFP, RFQ?
And with a project. Of course, now, you know, the thought was to use redevelopment funds with set aside funds, but all that's in limbo at the moment. But at least, it would still be a nice piece of property for a developer to come forward and propose a project.
And it's removing...
And pay the city back, basically, for the price that it costs you to obtain and to demolish it.
In the meantime, it's removing blight and hazards and liabilities
A liability.
From a city standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Very good. So is there a public comment on this? Can you come to the mic, please, just? 55? Okay, back to the council.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2011-34, a resolution of the City of Crescent City Redevelopment Agency approving the purchase of property known as 655 H Street, APN number 118-10, 170-02.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Director Enya?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
And Chairman Slert?
Yes, thank you. So that motion carries unanimous. And then, item 4B, is consider and approve a certificate of acceptance regarding the property located at 655 H Street. Janine?
Again, this is on the same piece of property, and this is just the second step. I just want to clarify, too, because as you noticed in the resolution, basically, we're lining out the timeline of everything that occurred to basically make our case, in case they do come back on the city for some reason about this. The acceptance letter is required for us to, basically to say that we're accepting this offer. I mean, they're...
Very good.
I would move to approve the certificate of acceptance for a property at 655 H Street. I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment regarding the site?
If I understand this right, you're voting on a piece of property that has contamination of lead and...
No, it's a building.
It's a building.
Okay, it's a building that...
All buildings have some portions possibly of lead or asbestos. So we're checking to see if that has occurred. We don't know. That's what we had to check.
And you're going to purchase this piece of property and redevelop it later?
We're going to remove the contaminants and demolish the building.
And then put it up for RFP, RFQ?
Right, for development.
For a developer, developer...
It just seems to me that you should find out what you're dealing with. I mean, what it has PCBs in it, or other things, before you vote.
We do that because we know what it's been used for. We've done due diligence on the property. The only two contaminants that are potentially there are asbestos and lead-based paint. It's a motel.
When Walmart was made, I read the environmental report on that, and there were PCBs on that property. And there was comment made that that couldn't be, that must be a mistake, because nothing was ever here. And so it was ignored.
Well, it's worse to leave this building in its present state.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, you know, money is really tight right now, and you're saying you're going to redevelop and use money, and I'm hearing something about lead and mercury and...
No, lead and asbestos.
And asbestos, okay.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Enya?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
And Chairman Slert?
Yes. So that motion carries unanimously also, five to nothing. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn...
Do you need to vote on the RDA letters? The letter, I don't know.
Yeah, you have to, now you take up the item that you added to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go back and revisit the RDA emergency letter that was requested to be added to the agenda by Councilmember Shalong.
I have a comment, because I have a copy of the letter. I think we need to change a sentence or two, because we're not doing the harbor as the city. And in the past, we 've used redevelopment money for what it says, or for disasters. I think we have lived with that. Where it says, "The city is only beginning to repair, rebuild, following a deadly tsunami in March of this year." We're not beginning to rebuild.
Do you have two different letters? Yours is coming from Riverland Empire, and yours is coming from the Little City?
Oh, I have the...
Oh, I have both. Basically, what she did was, Mary Creasy, she actually just did a small summary on each city in her district. And so the part about Crescent City says, "Historically hit by tsunamis, Crescent City has used redevelopment to clean up and rebuild after natural disasters." She's talking about 1964. "The city is only beginning to repair and rebuild following a deadly tsunami in March of this year. Without redevelopment, the process will likely take a much longer, further damaging the local fishing economy." So that was just her words. But what she said in her email was, "Please change this to fit what you want it to say." She just was trying to do a small little tidbit on each, yeah. So, as I said, she said, "Make it our own and send whatever we would like."
We can do that.
Yes.
Yeah. I'll just give it all to you.
It's on your email when you get back.
I have, I just...
It came late in the day.
So do we have a motion and a second for that?
I would move to approve sending a letter in support of the lawsuit, and also to Assemblyman Chesbrough and Senator Noreen Evans to discuss how the elimination of RDAs will affect our city.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote on that, please?
Sure. Director Enya?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Westfall?
Yes.
And Chairman Slert?
Yes, thank you. So that motion carries unanimous also. Okay, so we will adjourn the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the city council. And for item eight, we have no public hearings this evening. And so for reports, number nine, there's no reports. So we'll move to public comment. At this time, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized... non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to the staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not made at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, city, and/or county, and residency for the record. And public comment is limited to three minutes. Public comment. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Speakman from the county. You have stated that you did not recognize the official surveys that were taken at the beginning of the Business Improvement District protest that was started two years ago. So you had the city do another survey that you felt would be the official survey. After the results were in, there seemed to be much controversy about the results, and you were not happy with that survey either, probably because the results didn't come out as you had wanted them to. A council member asked that the triplicate do an unofficial poll of the general public on how they felt about bid. Considering there are only approximately 105 members of the Business Improvement District, there were 302 responses. You do the math. Tonight, I am here to present you with a packet of individually signed letters from business owners in Crescent City's Business Improvement District. There should be no question how each of these members voted. Each page is a different member's signature. Bid members are aware and very informed of what has been going on. There is no confusion. We are respectfully asking the council to do the will of the people, disestablish the Business Improvement District. May I give these to you?
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Hi, I'm Morrison from the county.
Welcome, Congress.
Thank you. Last week, Mr. Slert, you said that people were literally bargaining horses for hookups. And Mr. Barnes and Mr. Ward Stover agreed that there were enough hookups for 240 units in 2006 for the wastewater treatment plant. So that wasn't correct. Also...
Actually, when I was responding to the horse trading that was occurring, that was in about the year 2003, as I believe I stated. In other words, that's when the first cease and desist orders started to go into effect.
Yeah, you can't take my three. So, then you started talking about development. And you said, Mr. Barnes said, "Finally, we don't have to worry about the cease and desist order. We can now have development." And you just came from San Diego, you didn't want development, or I don't know how you feel about development, but that's why I moved up here, that's why so many people moved up here, is not to have to be involved in development. I'm not a developer. Nobody that I know is a developer. Mr. Barnes is a developer. You're an architect. This is all for your own personal, private projects. And all of a sudden, I get the feeling I'm going to be facing extension, sewer extension coming to my neighborhood. There was supposed to be a meeting, I guess, over a year ago, and as you can see, things have changed. We don't even know if they're going, if anybody's going to have a social security check next month. And I think you need to take those, have all those meetings again. We weren't allowed to, county people were not allowed to vote the first time because it was a city ordeal. And now that the city, I don't know how things are divided up anymore, but I will not pay one penny towards the sewer plant, sewer hookups, if this is all for Mr. Barnes again. The wastewater treatment plant was funded for him, the extension, $630,000 for extension pipes that are going right by Sunny Lane. Is he going to benefit from any of this? And is it going to cost the county people any money for these pipes? How much does it cost for a hookup?
The supervisors, they're the ones that are extending the line. They're paying for it, not the city. Those lines are being extended in the county. It's a county project, not city.
It's not a Jim Barnes project.
Those hook up into your wastewater treatment plant, though, don't they?
Everything in the entire county, if you don't have a septic system hooked up to our treatment plant.
Right.
Right. I have a septic system. Anyway, I'm going to fund to have everybody recalled, including the county. I'm going to help other people, so...
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Good evening.
Welcome.
This is Billy K. Gavin, Tigert County resident, city business owner. I just want to remind you again that until the City Council puts it to a formal vote, it is only on you five as our community leaders to decide. That I want to remind you that the law, the bid law is set up that per the way, and I'm not going to say this correctly, I don't have it in front of me, but per the way you are categorized is the weight of your vote. So, for example, a nonprofit or a bid booth renters, $50 assessment doesn't weigh the same against a financial institution who pays $400. And also to remind you that Ms. Speakman did speak up at a City Council meeting, and it is on record that she skewed the triplicates' vote, so I don't know how you want to weigh that one out. And also to remind you that if you have not paid your bid assessment, and those are still current from last year, that your vote doesn't count anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Okay. Is there other public comment? Mr. Salisbury?
Thank you. Yeah, about the bid. I mean, I think we need to get rid of bid. I mean, everybody's, that's part of it seems to, or most people that are part of it seem to think that we need to get rid of it. Over the years, I mean, I've talked about bid, and it just seems that the one person that's really making out like a bandit is Tony from TAB, I mean, TAB Associates. These people are paying money, and this guy's, he's like a slumlord. Sorry. I mean, I hear people that are renting from him, that he won't improve their bathrooms so the handicap people can go in there and use them, you know, things such as that. Okay. That said, Hampton Inn, no longer Hampton Inn, I guess now we're getting closer to the exotic destination resort that we were promised in the first place. How much closer are we going to get to having the restaurant and the meeting hall that was also supposed to go with that? And how much closer are we going to get to maybe that guy getting a little, riding lawnmower and making one of his guys go out and mow that place sometime? Can, enough of that. Can. We spent a lot of money, so did California, on some shipping container housing. Were we getting anywhere with that? I mean, like hundreds of thousands of dollars on that. I'd like to have that as a discussion on a future meeting. My Washington Mutual Bank is now Chase. And I know it's been years and years and years, and I asked for some lines to be painted in front of Chase so that when people go in there to the bank, they know where they're supposed to park. Because there's only like room for three people to park in front of that bank. And people always go in there and make it so there's like only room for two people. Now, how the, you know, one of the biggest banks in, well, in the United States, anyway, got away with not having to have a parking lot like every other bank in town, I don't know. But we need to do something with that. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Jesse. Is there other public comment?
I was just going to comment on Jesse's comment. I don't think that...
I don't think that the city actually funded the can...
Cotages.
Cotages.
Let's look into it.
Are you talking about...
We'll look into it, Jesse, and get back to you.
I do know the majority of the money that can received for that was from an REHD.
I also know, I was at a meeting last month where that issue was discussed again, and they're still, it's still going forward, so it's not a dead issue.
It's early in the year.
It's not a dead issue.
Is there other public comment? Ms. Magga?
My name is Jody Makeham. I live in the City of Crescent City. And for the second time in a couple of years, my cost of my garbage pickup went up. And when I called down to find out about that, they said that they can raise it every year if they feel like it. And I understand a couple of you sit on the board for that. And that, I asked how long the contract was awarded for, because I thought it was a 10-year contract for pickup, and it's actually 12. And they said they could raise it every year if they wanted to. So I was curious as to why our rates were in place before the contract was awarded. Did the consideration of how much people pay for their garbage go into all that? Because you guys awarded them a 12-year contract before we even knew what our rates were going to be. And then when you top that off with $22 increase in the sewer plant, then the cost of living for, again, I always think of Crescent City as a little bit of a retirement area, and people are on fixed incomes, and all these things that are fixed prices for people keep going up. And during all the brouhaha with the wastewater treatment plant, I thought that there was an excess of money in the water account that was going to go towards keeping the rates for the sewer plant down. And I haven't heard anything else about that. So why do you award a 12-year contract without finding out how much it's going to cost for us before it's awarded to the people?
Ms. Shalung, can you address that?
Sure. I sit on the Delarant Salt Waste Management Authority as a representative of the city. And we actually went through about a year-long process before that contract was awarded. And there was extensive meetings held about what that contract would look like and what it would consist of and what the new services would include. And the rates were actually published, you know, through that process. And the amount of the contract was published before it was awarded, actually. And so nobody likes to see rates go up. But the reason that there's a, I think, like, for instance, my garbage, I paid like 19 bucks a month for one can, and now I pay like 23. And the reason for that is when the original contract was awarded to Recology the previous 12 years, they are not allowed to increase the rates except for, what's it called? Yearly? The CPI. Consumer price. Consumer price, according to the Consumer Price Index. So they can do that every year, which is a very small amount, unless there's a new service that we ask them to do that would cost them more. So basically, the rate that was established 15 years ago was never raised more than CPI, which I'm not sure what that would equate to on a yearly basis, but it's a very small amount. And so, fast forward 15 years later in today's world, the rates for them to provide that service are, you know, obviously going to be higher. And so we did the best we could. And the reason the contract is so long is because, for instance, if Hambro were to have been awarded the contract because they bid on it, they would have spent, you know, millions of dollars of an investment to buy the trucks and the carts and everything that they need to do to ramp up to operating that kind of a business. And no company would make that kind of investment on a two- or three-year contract. Most garbage contracts are in excess of seven to 10 years. And for Recology, it was also another large investment because they had to buy trucks or add to their trucks to be able to pick up those carts with a truck that has a big arm on it that does it automatically. So it was a big investment. So any time you do that kind of contract with a company where they're investing millions of dollars, you obviously reward them with that length of a contract. I hope I explained that well.
So I have a minute and a half left on my public comment?
So, the amount that you guys, because you sat on the board, and it's $378 per meeting per month for the board...
$375.
I didn't see any rates published in the newspaper for what my rates were going to be. So I guess you guys might have known about this ahead of time, but I didn't know about it ahead of time. I understand that they're supposed to be able to make green energy out of Pelican Bay State Prison off of the waste from our lawns. And if you want this city to look better, why don't they at least have some free pickup for the lawns like they do in every other city, keeping the parks going by picking up the green waste? And they could be running it out to Pelican Bay and actually sign it to them for energy production. And it wasn't the lowest bid that you guys went with. And I don't know if what you're saying is maybe you didn't go with the lowest bid because they would have been investing a lot of money, but if the rates are going to go up every year, that's not right. You guys, if you want to award a 12-year contract, find out how much it costs them to get those, the equipment, and then not allow them to raise the rates on us every year. The other thing is that I came up and asked at another meeting when the mayor was tired, and I asked why we have to pay more than Eureka. And she said I wasn't allowed to put him on the spot like that. So our rates just seem to be really high out of this town. And I don't know if it's based on volume, but we were paying more than Eureka at that time.
Okay. I'm not aware of Humboldt County's rates at this moment, but we actually sat on, or a ad hoc committee at the prison to look at building a digester for energy out there to actually provide their energy on-site. That would have saved the state millions of dollars a year. After about a year and a half of studies and bringing all the community members to the table, it was determined that it was not cost-effective. We did not have enough waste here in our county to do so. We would have to have Delarant County's waste, Humboldt County's waste, Currie County's waste, all together to make that a cost-effective project.
But then at least to use it as compost at the parks like they do in other cities so that we can keep our lawns looking decent without fumes. $22 to have your waste picked up curbside for your lawn.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we will move to continuing business, item number 10. Consider and adopt, read by title only, an ordinance entitled, ordinance number 764, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City revising the Crescent City Municipal Code by amending Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.30, by adding Section 13.30.016 pertaining to sewer service charges.
Basically, this is the secretary.
That's correct. Are there questions or clarifications on the part of the council? Okay. Is there a public comment regarding this item? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the council.
Excuse me. I thought there was other people that were going to be talking, so I was going to wait my turn, but Catherine Kelly?
Please.
Crescent City. Oh, please don't raise our rates. Lots of people are out there suffering. Electricity just went up. Garbage just went up. Groceries are going up. Gas is too high. Incomes are going down, but we must raise our rates one more time. And this is really pointless, falling on deaf ears. I'm sure the decision's already been made, so, oh, please don't raise our rates. I've already been contacted about your recall, and I've already got 30 signatures lined up. So go ahead, raise the rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Please.
So I believe it's supposed to be going up under $22, but my understanding is that, again, I'll reiterate to you in case... again, I'll reiterate to you in case you've forgotten, that you said it's only 11% expansion, which is going to give us about how many sewer hookups have already been used up. Beyond that, you're out of capacity again. And the reason that the plant is so expensive is because there is quite a bit more capacity than that, and it is the developers that should be paying for this, and not the people, again, that I mentioned a moment ago on fixed incomes. And that so many houses are being foreclosed on. I can only imagine how many houses are out there that don't really even need the sewer plant anymore because they've all been foreclosed on, and they're sitting there empty. I just love how I come up here, and nobody looks at me. So when the camera that's looking at me on the internet, nobody is even looking at me. It's like you guys don't even listen.
I'm taking notes on what you're saying.
Wonderful. All these houses being foreclosed on. You said that you were going to take some of the money out of the water fund to avoid increasing the rates like this when people can't afford it. They're building a wastewater treatment plant in Gold Beach for about $11 million. I think over half of that came in with grant money. We got, what did we get in grants? $50,000, because they said we were going to waterfront street with it because the golf course didn't go through. We didn't get any grants for our project. And now it's all being set on top of the shoulders of a community that's living at 60% out of below poverty. People can't afford this. So you guys, if you raise the rates, more houses get foreclosed on, more homes are sitting there without needing a sewer. It's going to be interesting to see what happens. I guess this is happening all over the state of California. The community just goes bankrupt. What does that mean? People can't afford it. We've been up here a million times telling you guys the same thing over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
And what I see happening is, to continue on in that same vein, is in the newspaper, then you have foreclosed houses, and it has a minimum bid of $500 to buy that house. And I am going to go down to the assessors' office. I want to see who's buying these houses, certainly hoping it isn't you guys or the county supervisors, because that's quite a grand scheme there. But there goes your tax basis, and, I don't know, population of eight?
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Comment?
Please.
I work three jobs to take care of my family. I'm not out buying foreclosed homes. Thank you very much for the record. And to address Jody, we, I don't think that we're allowed to use our water funds. So I'm not sure... Okay, well, you look that up and show it to me. But we're not allowed to use our water funds to pay our sewer expenses because a sewer is an enterprise fund, and those are two different pots of money. And then, I just wanted to mention that our developers, not developers in general, but the sewer capacity charges were raised as well, from 6,000 something to 9650, I believe it is. So those rates did go up. Unfortunately, California is a much tougher state to live in than the state of Oregon, and the grant funds available in California are different than Oregon. And then also, what else? I was also writing down what you're saying so I could try to answer your questions. I guess that's it.
I just wanted to add something to that. Let's see if I can catch that train of thought. The rates payers are 100% on the loan, and that was not fair. And if this city ever corrected that, then there wouldn't be this turmoil. The expansion portion was to be paid for by the developers. So we never got an accurate figure on the expansion portion. That needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Mr. Salisbury?
Yes, thank you. I think that we really need to get out in the open exactly how much the developers are paying, what percentage of this expansion that they're paying, what percentage of this expansion that they're supposed to pay for the entire expansion. And because of potential conflicts of interest, I think that we need to get out and out in the open exactly what the people that are part of, I hate to keep bringing up Mr. Barnes, but how many hookups that he is, his projects are a part of, to get it out in the open. I mean, I've heard the question asked many times, and it seems to get fielded and not answered. And I would really appreciate it, Mr. Slert, if you would run these meetings and stop letting Kelly run these meetings. You know, you're a big boy. You can do it.
Thank you.
You don't need her help.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment on this item. And it's back to the council.
I'm not trying to run the meeting. I just have my own opinion. That's what I was elected to do, is to have an opinion. So, I just...
Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak?
Please.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind you that the $2.65 sewer rate increase is still below what we originally had approved, which was $30 over the three years. And this council worked diligently with our staff and the state of California to take a 20-year loan to a 30-year loan, so that we wouldn't have to pay that much right now. And the rates have been increased, but at a slower rate and at a lower rate than what we originally thought we were going to have to pay. So we did, we did raise the rates the first time by $10. The second time, I believe, it was $5 or $6. And this time, it's $2.65 instead of $10, $10, $10. I know it's painful, but it is less than what we had actually projected. And we've been through the Mr. Barnes thing before. Nobody's afraid to talk about it. Mr. Barnes owned a piece of property that he sold, and to people that put homes on it, or started to, anyway. So... That's it. Thank you.
Great. And I would offer that, at the last council meeting, specifically, we addressed several issues regarding the raising of the sewer rates, the $2.60 at this time. And it was made clear that there was no COLA that was issued previously. And we also talked about when the loan was changed from a 20-year loan to a 30-year loan, that that reduced the rates at that time. It seems to me it was about a year ago that the council took that action a year plus, that the net effect was it ended up reducing the net increase that was scheduled for that second increase. And then subsequently, we've also got into the issue of septicage, and having a septicage disposal system added to the system, and the intentions are, and the early pro forma suggests that that will be another revenue generator that, in fact, could potentially help offset future increases regarding the wastewater treatment plant and sewage fees. So that's just a clarification.
I'd like to make a couple of observations.
Please.
Number one, the Prop 218 protest vote failed. And as a result of that, a recall was initiated against former city clerk Diane Nickerson because people felt that she falsified the vote. And as a result of that, she resigned under a cloud having to do with the recall. Then the people tried a referendum, and that was denied. And then we tried an initiative to repeal the sewer rates, and that lost in the courts. So just to keep on top of this, I see that people, the public, have been fighting this battle for three, four years now. Also, when we talk about spending money to make money, I recall Jim Barnes saying in our workshops that the lab would be paid off in two and a half years, and here we are, two and a half years later, and it's not even a profit center yet. And speaking of Jim Barnes, I believe that his conflict of interest is still a matter of concern to many in our community, because even though he sold off some land, he still has a percentage interest in some of these developments. So these are ongoing concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 764.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries on a vote of four to one? Thank you. So we'll move to new business items. Item number 11 is consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution 2011-33, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving an employment agreement with the city manager of the City of Crescent City. And I would just offer that this is a culmination of about a six-month effort on the part of the staff in this council. It's been an in-depth and thorough process, and maybe even painful at times. But the good news is, we've identified a key candidate, and we're prepared to move forward. And I think it's a momentous occasion in the history of our city with this election forthcoming. Janine?
Mr. Palazzo brings with him 23 years of municipal government experience in multiple communities throughout the state of California. His most recent position was in South Lake Tahoe, and he was the Director of Development and Housing, redevelopment and housing. It will be nice to have someone with some redevelopment experience in the next few months to guide us through this really tumultuous time. And Mr. Palazzo brings that experience with him. His official date, if you sign the contract tonight, will be August the 8th. And he's here to say hello.
Counselor, are there any questions or clarifications?
No, just a comment that during the interview process, I was very impressed with Mr. Palazzo and his vision for our city, including a strategic plan and all of his experience. So, welcome.
Same. Looking forward to working with you and having you work with our great staff, and continuing to move our city forward in the right direction.
Very good. So is there a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 2011-33 for the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving an employment agreement with our new city manager, Eugene Palazzo.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
And I'm a yes. So that's unanimous, five to nothing. And I would say, congratulations, Jean. Congratulations, council. The efforts paid off. And I would, on behalf of the council and the community, welcome you to Crescent City. And I also, at the same time, can't thank Janine enough for the great job she's done filling in.
She's not done yet.
That's right.
Say a few words.
And I think Mr. Palazzo represents a very good sense of fit for our city, and that was very important to this council. So, welcome, Jean. Would you like to say a word or two?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for this great opportunity to come to Crescent City and serve as your city manager. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, the city staff, the community members, and the vision for this community and the community forward. So, excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Welcome to you and to your wife, Ellen, and your family. Great. Okay, continuing in new business, we will consider and the appointment of Ellen, or Eileen Evermore, to the Business Improvement District Advisory Board of Directors.
It's just going to be verbal, or not. Well, Cheryl said that it was going to be a verbal report.
Hello. Eileen expressed interest in being involved in our board, and we had no one else really interested. And so, to fast-track it, instead of doing a timely election, we just wanted to move forward and have you appoint somebody. We're down to five, and it makes having a quorum kind of tricky sometimes. So unfortunately, Eileen could not be here tonight, but I think she'll bring a lot to the table, being in the bid, leaving the bid, being part of bid when it was first formed. She's brought a lot of great new energy and ideas already. So we're excited to have her on board.
Great.
Great. Questions?
I appreciate her proposing to get involved in our participation.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Ms. Shalong will recuse herself. Okay, so is there public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment. Bring it back to the council. Please. Number 12?
I thought there were a lot of people, Jody Mangan, Crescent City, that were trying to dissolve bid. That hasn't been decided yet, or no? Okay.
Both statements are true. People are interested in dissolving bid, and it has not happened.
So, I attended a bid meeting, but I don't have a business downtown. And there were like five people there. And so, as far as my being there, I was with the person who had a business downtown, but actually decided to move her business from the downtown area. And one of the, somebody you mentioned earlier, Tabman Associates, and they have signs up all throughout the downtown area on vacant buildings that remain vacant. And we've discussed this before, that the city has an ordinance that when a business hasn't been rented for greater than some months, that it's considered blight, and that efforts need to be made on the part of the city to get that business rented, which would enliven the downtown area considerably. And, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council.
I'd just like to make a comment that we don't have an agenda item to consider the surveys that Ms. Speakman gave to us tonight, but I would definitely be interested in reading those. And until such time as we do dissolve bid, or decide to keep the assessments going, we should continue to have bid board members. So I appreciate Ms. Evermore's volunteering to be on the bid.
And I agree as far as having a member on the bid board. And I think probably after 18 years of discussion with this, I will make an agenda item for the next meeting, so we can talk about whether we want bid to exist or not. And even if we do dissolve bid, it'll take some time, and they should have a board to conduct their business until that time.
And I would offer that, I attended the last bid meeting, board meeting last week, or a week, week before last. And it was a great meeting. It was productive. It was constructive, and ran just fine. And they took care of some important business items that needed to be dealt with. So, bid is alive and working actually well at this time.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Eileen Evermore to the Business Improvement District.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull that vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem...
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Uh, yes. So that's unanimously, uh, approved, four to nothing, with, uh, Ms. Shalung recused. Okay, item 13, at this time, I will recuse myself and turn it over to, uh, Madam Mayor Pro Tim Murray.
Item number 13 is to, I'll wait for the musical chairs here.
The changing of the guard.
For support of the Delnart County Regional Airport Application for Funding under the Department of Transportation Small Community Air Service Development Program. Thank you.
The Small Community Air Service Development Program provides the airport an opportunity to effectively promote services which assist in ensuring long-term sustainability of local air service. Obviously, awareness of the airport is vital, and so is the essential air service, and I believe that Councilmember Shalung had some information today about emergency, um, not the emergency, essential air service, they could E, essential air service. And it looks like it was a little iffy if that would continue, but it seems like we fall under the radar.
Yeah. As of today, and I just barely got to look at it, I just forwarded it to you, but, um...
And I barely looked at it, Ivy.
Essential air service is provided to a community such as ours, it's rural, and we receive about a million dollars a year from the FAA to provide that transportation, um, from our community to, into and out of our community. The FAA's EAS funding has been...
Winded.
Iffy in being approved over the last several years, and every year it keeps getting, we keep getting a continued resolution from the federal government. And today we received, or over the weekend, we received information that, um, EAS funding is continuing, um, through this year. Uh, the gap funding is, has been approved. However, the same senator that, um, worked on getting it approved has recommended that EAS funding, um, be eliminated in the future. And fortunately, there's some guidelines for what, what you, um, how it's going to be eliminated, and fortunately, we are still safe, so, um, which is a good thing, and so...
So this letter is just to support?
This, but this letter actually, no, this letter is actually in support of another funding program that helps us promote the airport so that we can, the continued promotion of this airport will hopefully at some point, um, less reliance on EAS, so that's why I was trying to...
Right. The airport, uh...
Bring in business.
The airport has, um...
Easy business.
Applied for, um, a grant funding to market the airport. Over the past several years through Sixcel Consulting, and we haven't gotten it in the past, but we keep trying.
And I'd just like to point out...
And we have a threshold of number of passengers that we need, employment and...
Employments. And I'd like to point out that, um, Ms. Shalung sits on the Airport Authority Board, and that's why she is the most knowledgeable to speak about it, as well as a previous, um, matter that was on the agenda.
How much is this grant for?
I, I, you know, the, when the airport requested it, I don't know exactly the amount that it's going to...
I have that information, and I can get it too, I just can't remember off the top of my head right now.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any comments from the council? I'll open it up to public comment then. Is there any public comment on this matter? If so, please step up to the podium, state your name and city or county residence, and limit your comment to three minutes. Ms. Speakman?
Hi, Cynthia Speakman, County. Uh, since I own Delnart Travel, uh, everybody that comes in to me to buy airline tickets, uh, I always have a, um, what I usually do is check all three airports, Medford, Arcata, and here. And over, I'd say, the last eight months, when I've compared all the airports, Crescent City is holding its own compared to Medford, and I have turned a lot of people from going from Arcata and Medford to Crescent City.
Thanks.
So they are, they are going, and a lot of people come in and they say right away that they wanna see how much it costs to go out of Medford, and I go, "Well, let me check Crescent City," and then they'll see it's either cheaper or the same amount of money. And so people are going out of Crescent City.
Thank you for promoting it.
Right, thank you.
Good information.
Reparking.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, for now.
So far.
Um, any other public comment? And I'll bring it back to the council. Need a motion to approve the attached letter?
I'll, I'll move that we approve the attached letter supporting the Delnart Regional Airport Application for Funding under the Department of Transportation Small Community Air Service Development Program.
Should we change the second signature, though? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it would also be the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority.
And I'll amend my amendment, or my motion to have the appropriate signature.
This was actually what Susan said here. I don't remember.
Second.
Hang on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
She's good.
We'll wait for Mayor Slert to re-enter the room after recusing himself in that last
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Murray.
You're welcome.
Uh, item number 14 and 15, that was actually approached by the interim city manager to reverse the order, uh, at the request of the staff, so if we could, uh, move to item number 15, which is review the concept design for Front Street and authorize the staff to proceed with plans and specifications. Mr. Barnes?
Do you want the light down at all?
No.
Okay.
Not yet. Eric is the Public Works presenter. He is the guy that is a little smoother when it comes to speaking, but what I wanted to do was, uh, remind the council and public the, uh, number of years and the effort that's gone into getting us where we are today. And when Eric and I took up our jobs in Crescent City, there was, uh, some Caltrans money to do a study of Front Street. And I don't know there, whether there was reluctance, but that money had been there quite a while, and nobody had really taken up the mantle to, to do a study, and so we hired a company, they did some, had some public meetings, did some schematic plans, and, uh, the council at that time, which was about seven years ago, approved those schematics, and, uh, after that, we had several town hall meetings that, uh, this subject was brought up, we got the public input. From that, the Public Works Department came up with an additional schematic which was presented to the council a year, a year and a half ago, and, uh, at a public hearing for the project. And it was decided that we would go back again and get some, uh, transportation money and do a design, so a cult, a consultant was selected, and what we're gonna see tonight is the result of that selection, their work, and another public hearing that we held. So there's been a large number of public hearings on this, and, uh, so, that's, uh, where we are right now, the project. So I'm gonna have Eric come up and present the project.
Thanks, Jim. That was a good overview. Welcome, Eric.
Uh, yes, I was hoping to give a presentation to the council with the aids of a few PDFs where we could go over the project and the, uh, project design, but technical difficulties might be impeding that, so, at this ti... So, Jim does do a very nice karaoke, so at this time, I'd like to bring Jim back up. Is he still on the screen for the public, for the council?
You just lost it. Can I plug us?
Alright, so, Front Street, as Jim was saying, this has been a, uh, very lengthy process, and it's taken us years to get where we are today, but speaking not only as, as an engineer for the city and one who's very involved in the project, but just as a member of the community, and...
Quit trying to run this meeting.
We're back up in business now. Yeah, exactly.
It's a good thing we're live-streaming this.
So anyway, as I was saying, as being, you know, a person that was born and raised in this community and, uh, and, you know, hopefully a member of the community for, for many years to come, I'm very excited about this project for what it means to the community and for not only locals, but for tourists as well. So, when we started working through this project, and we had some of the, some of the public meetings and talking to some of our visitors from out of town, they had referred to Front Street as basically the, the five-lane road to nowhere. And I think that speaks volumes, one, as to how influential Front Street is to our community as being a gateway between the park and downtown, and that it, that it functions correctly, but also as to our history. And the truth is, Front Street has a lot to do with the history of Crescent City. Uh, when they say the five-lane road to nowhere, well, that's, that's not true. Really, Front Street was your avenue to Seaside Hospital, the only regional hospital in, in the whole Delnart County. It was your road to construct the, the breakwater, where they brought in dolo's and they brought in tetrapods, and all the rocks to create the, the breakwater and the B Street Pier and whatnot. So, the history of Front Street is there. The fact is, though, that the function of Front Street has changed. We're no longer bringing in dolo's. Seaside Hospital's not there anymore. So it was imperative for us to look at the design of Front Street again and try to redesign or redefine the function of Front Street. So as we were working through those things, we tried to take into consideration everything that was brought about at the public meetings that we had, and also in the, in the latest public meeting that we had once this design concept was first brought before the public. Some of those features include diagonal parking, bulb outs, which we'll go into in more detail, a roundabout at B Street Pier, directional signage, increased pedestrian safety, and also the inclusion of local art. The first thing we did when Drake Haglin was hired is we went over these functions of what the community had already said was important to them. And then we also wanted to embrace some of just our local knowledge, and so that's where, you know, Jim and I and Charles and people that have been involved in the community for a while tried to incorporate the idea of the Fourth of July Parade and how important that is and how, you know, integral part of our community it is, and that we make sure that this design functions with that as well. So, here you see a, basically a screenshot of the entire length of Front Street. Some of the important concepts that we, that we talked about and wanted to come to fruition were, were the cultural center that you see here. Uh, we wanted to increase parking for it. We wanted to accentuate this node at H Street here, as you have the post office and sort of your entrance into the downtown area, and so we wanted to, uh, to bring that into the park a little bit more. We wanted to address parking issues in the soccer field, as well as a, a roundabout and directional signage down here at B Street to let people know exactly where they're going. So as we're starting from the highway and working our way west towards B Street, I'll, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see that one of the issues with Front Street is that it is a long street. It's about 3,000 feet long, so we'll take our, take our time and work our way through So this is the S-curve, and the S-curve does have its own challenges, and some of these were brought up at the public meeting as well, but the scope of work for this project was to take us through the roundabout at B Street and then basically to the highway where you enter into Caltrans right away. You'll see this is an important node right here. This is what we call the, the, sort of the gateway feature. This, this point right here can be seen, if you're on the highway heading south, you can see this point for about nine blocks. It's also a key point from the highway as you're heading north, as if you look to the left, you'll be able to see this same feature. So this is an important feature to tell people, "Hey, this, there's something to see in this town. Let's turn off on the front way. We have a park, we have downtown," and so it's sort of really our gateway feature. What the thought is here, and a lot of the details haven't been worked out, is that you would have some sort of iconic signage here, something that, that grabs your attention and says there's something to see. So this, this feature would be here as well as also repeated near the, the northbound lanes as well as south of Crescent City near the hotels. So you'd get that, sort of the reminder of the iconic signage all the way through. Again, working our way south, we've all, or west, I should say, we've all been to the cultural center where they've had events, weddings, so on and so forth, and parking is always an issue. So you end up lined up down the street, you end up by H Street, and you have to walk all the way to the cultural center. Or you park across the street at the parking lot and then have to cross the five lanes. Not always the safest, so this design includes diagonal parking in front of the cultural A key point, as I mentioned, is this H Street node here. On H Street, you can turn right, head into the downtown, or you can turn left, and you'll head down into Howe Drive, where we have some of our most unique features, which is what brings people to Crescent City a lot. So we wanted to take advantage of this node and break up the long straightness of Front Street. As it is right now, it's another term that was used by the person that said the, uh, the road to nowhere, is that you can land a 747 on Front Street. And so, we wanted to break that up, and so as you look down, you don't just see this straight road that goes on for 3,000 feet. It actually meanders out a little bit, and what this does is it brings Front Street into the park, and it also brings downtown into Front Street. So this is a nice, unique node, and it also creates these little landscape areas here. This does two things, and it'll be a feature that we talk about later on down the road, but one, and this was a huge challenge for Front Street, is how in the world do you soften a five-story concrete building that was built in 1929? And it's just straight lines with five stories of concrete that's 12 inches thick walls. And the thought here is, well, you bring the street away from it, so it's not just pavement to sidewalk to concrete building, and you'll actually create an area here that could be landscaped, or possibly what we can do is we'll create areas for local art. And what we want to do with the local art is we don't want to just have local art just to be there, we want the local art to function, and one of the functions it can have is to tell the history of Crescent City, because as, as we all know, the history of Crescent City is, is very fascinating and very important. So the tourist, as he's turning on to Front Street and driving down Front Street, he'll see some of the things that, that has, uh, that Crescent City has, has had happen to it over the years, such as tsunamis, or such as the mill and the timber industry and whatnot. So working our way down, again, in the beachfront area here where we have events and plazas and, you know, this time of year, there's the, there's the soccer games going on, and there's kids just all over the place. If you've ever driven down Front Street on a Saturday, there are kids hopping over that wall, and you really have to watch out not to, not to hit them, and so you, what we did is we created through lanes here on the, on the north side, and then there'll be a safe pedestrian zone with diagonal parking here on the south side of Front Street. This will also be an area where we can have events or vendors and whatnot throughout the year. You see, Front Street again meanders to break up the, the, the length of it, and it also creates these areas for, again, some more artwork as we're working our way down towards B Street. As you get to the roundabout, the roundabout was put in the design not necessarily as a traffic calming device as it is in most areas, but this is to give an opportunity to, to break up the length of Front Street with some sort of iconic artwork right here at the, at the end, so it culminates in that, and we'll get into that in a little bit, as well as directional signage, so when you get here that you know, okay, straight to the lighthouse, or you're gonna turn right to go to Pebble Beach Drive, or you're gonna turn left to go onto the B Street Pier, and so it sort of lets the tourist know. And that, in a nutshell, is basically the, the concept of the design of Front Street. We'll go into now into some three-dimensional, three-dimensional images of what it might look like.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the roundabout, is that gonna be big enough for motorhomes to turn around?
Yes, actually, every intersection we designed for the California legal limit truck, which is a 65-foot trailer, because we realized that we do have the Otten's distributing here, so a gas station that a lot of big trucks use, as well as a treatment plant. Um, there's a project that's slated here possibly, and so we wanted to be able to accommodate future use as well.
Great, thank you.
You see, this, as we go through the next images, these are the points that they're actually taken, and this was done by Drake Haglin and Associates in Design Workshop is who came up with these images. So you see, here's a shot as you're looking, actually from the B Street intersection, you're looking east towards the highway, and this is what I taught, was talking about with some sort of iconic sort of symbol at the end, sort of a culmination, kind of a, a piece that says you have a, have arrived, so to speak. It's a, in this case, it's a breaching whale. Uh, one of the thoughts that they had is in that... It's a, in this case, it's a breaching whale. Uh, one of the thoughts that they had is in that median, as you're approaching B Street, is possibly what you could do is you could have a, maybe a whale's tail as you started, then a back and different pieces of the whale to sort of signify the whale migration that goes by and so many tourists come to see. You'll notice another thought with Front Street, and this will tie into the next agenda item as well, is to put a boardwalk stamped colored concrete along Front Street to, again, signify our beach town and sort of break it up and give it some of that landscape architecture. They threw some different ideas out there. So, again, these are possibly some crab pot art or whatnot. These will not be included in this project. This will be up to the local artists and for the council at a future time to dictate exactly what'll be placed in these landscape areas. But the important part is that the design and function of Front Street does create these areas. Uh, you'll see the pedestrian sort of area here is broken up with possibly a safety fence. This will just be another measure that you can, one, sort of break it up with some sort of architectural features, like to have fish here. There can be other sort of local artwork that we could put on. This was actually a surprise to us when we saw the, the board, but another option could be a scuba diver.
Cause we have a...
It's a spaceman.
I did, I did too.
An important old concept to talk about as well, though, is the veterans.
What about Sasquatch? Maybe something like that would be more appropriate.
It definitely could. Another important feature, though, of Front Street is the inclusion of the veterans monument. Uh, this was previously slated for the intersection there. We were talking about the iconic signage. So, we're working with Charles, and I know he's working with that, that veterans group. But, I thought was we could place it here near the, near the, the very center node here on Front Street, which would be the H Street intersection. This would create a, a very nice space for this veterans memorial. Currently, the S S A medio is there, so you can possibly combine the two or sort of have this monument type of place here. This would take it off the highway and create more of a, more of a quieter sort of place to reflect on, on exactly what the veterans have done for us.
That's good.
You can just see some other views. As I was saying, though, the, the Fourth of July Parade is very important to this community and it's important that it, that it continues to be as it, as it was and that the design of Front Street doesn't dictate that we change the route that's been here for many, many years. So, you'll see these bleachers here. This is another thing that we can do in some of these nodes, is, is not just forget about the Fourth of July Parade, but actually embrace it and design sort of around, not necessarily around that day, but, but keep it in mind as we're designing. So, the Front Street width is wide enough to handle the parade route as it goes down K, as you'll notice there isn't a center median until you get further down by the B Street Pier. And again, this is a shot by where the bus stops would be. One thought here is that you could possibly put some artwork that resolves around possibly the mills or whatnot to sort of embrace that history as well. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to the council as we're requesting basically that you approve the, just the street, streetscape design and the overall layout. There'll be many more architectural features that we'll be bringing back to the council at a later date when the design is finalized.
Eric, maybe it'd be worthwhile if you could zoom back out and touch on the, um, underlying themes that, uh, the Drake Haglund team, uh, developed with yourselves.
Thank you very much, Charles. You see, there's different shades as you're working your way down. And, as we were talking about the different concepts of Front Street and the concepts of Crescent City, trying to make it all be cohesive, Crescent City has, has adopted a theme of where the redwoods meet the sea. And so, as you work your way from the highway to B Street, they wanted to incorporate that theme. And so, you would have your upland area here, and what you saw, the artwork of the mill in here as the, as the bus stop. So, that would be more of your upland type of theme. You could go into a shore zone here where maybe you have some, you know, possibly crabs or something like that where you would incorporate your boardwalk sort of sidewalks. And you would go into the ocean area with some of your fish and whatnot, and your whales start to migrate in through here to your deep ocean where you culminate with the breaching whale. So, it really keeps that same theme that Crescent City has long adopted.
What about the redwoods?
And, the, the redwoods would be in that upland area there. So, you know, with the mill and different history of the redwoods at that point.
I, I would just offer that I was, uh, pleased to be part of the early workshop and, and then the last public, uh, workshop, which I thought the project was hugely well-received by the entire community. Uh, and I want to salute the staff and, and the Drake Haglund team and, and Howard and Steve in particular. Uh, Howard was even here at the Fourth of July Parade, coming over from Sacramento area and, uh, taking pictures and understanding and feeling, uh, how the Fourth of July, uh, what a big event it is for the community. And so we stopped and visited with one another in that process. So, I salute them along with yourselves and our local, uh, in-house team, Eric. Because I think for me, um, beachfront park, uh, for the community, the greater community of the city and the county, represents the front yard. And people go down to the park and to the water's edge or the waterfront. And, and I think what has been developed here and evolved from the early ideas is actually a very big league, first-class, uh, kind of development for a major street. And, and I think what's happened is we've captured, uh, as a team, the spirit and the essence of a seacoast community. Um, celebrating aspects of the history and it can evolve over time. So, I think it's, uh, an outstanding, uh, design. A couple specific questions that I, uh, had in reviewing it hard, I was thinking back to the Fourth of July when the trailers seemed to be, the food trailers seemed to be, you know, going forever. And if we're allocating enough area, and I think there was discussion about in that, uh, protected parking area there of doubling them up uh, uh, across from one other side, it hope becomes a whole promenade and pedestrian area. So, is there enough area there or do we need, need to incorporate more, would be the question? And then the, that path, uh, right along that area to me looks kind of static, that it's just a hard-edged, uh, concrete sidewalk going along the front of cars, uh, whereas just to the left, it looked like it was meandering and being a little more user-friendly. And it just seemed like if it meandered from E Street roughly down to G Street, that that would start to make it feel like it's incorporating, uh, the park on some level. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree, actually.
I, I, I think there's a lot of room for vendors if we choose to keep it in the street. You know, this is marked vendor area on the grass, and I know the Chamber next year wants to move those vendors around and put them on the grass. I don't know if we're gonna do that, but if we do that, that, there, there, there looks like there's plenty of room.
I think you would have the option to do either or. And so we'll definitely work closely with the Chamber and Gina and make sure that, that we do have enough room. There's approximately 600 feet of this parking area here. It's about two city blocks.
Yeah.
And like Richard was saying, you could possibly utilize both the, the grass and that vendor sort of area.
And so do we have the power that we would need to accommodate that?
Yes, currently the, the power pedestals do run right, right along here, I believe, for that 600 feet. They would need to be adjusted slightly, but...
Great.
Good job.
Maybe it'd be helpful if, uh, Eric did a presentation to the Chamber Board. That may be one of the, one of the upcoming meetings.
Sure.
I would change the alien diver for Bigfoot.
What, uh, I guess, you know, what we're doing tonight is once we get your blessing, then the, uh, designers are gonna start putting it on paper. And it would cost us something then to go back and say, nah, let's do something totally different. So, that's the reason we're meeting tonight. Because, uh, once we make this decision, then that's kind of it unless we, you know, change it.
And I would just add that in, in the public workshops, they went through in careful detail, along with Eric and Jim and the whole team, all of the turning radii, the parking counts, um, where the cur, where the, uh, highway was proposed to curve or arc versus where it's straight. The new parking at the, um, cultural center, which was, I think, a huge accomplishment.
Could we, um, I was curious on the gateway, cause I, I've always thought a gateway to somewhere would be good.
And we, and we actually did talk about that. The, the, uh, challenge seemed to come into play regarding the funding of that. And, uh, Tamara Layton from LTIC was there. And so, the discussion was, if I recall, that that was a priority. Uh, but in the reality, it probably was gonna fall behind, uh, to design that and create the solution if there was talking about a roundabout circle at that, at the entry to the city, uh, Caltrans and, you know, total variables.
And I'm just thinking about Banden, um, into the downtown area. There's the, um, the overhead structure that says welcome to Banden, or welcomed downtown Banden. And there's also, um, I think one of the newest things in town is a picture of the Banden, the Coquill Lighthouse, um, kind of a structure of it. So, I was thinking maybe if we had something at that corner that would be like a structure of our, of our lighthouse, um, or just something that's eye-catching that...
Yeah, I, I do think that we're working with Design Workshop and, and that is the proposed idea here, is to create something eye-catching here that would catch your eye. Then possibly go ahead and mimic it again on the other side of that S turn. But the S turn does provide some challenges that we'll need to overcome with Caltrans in the future to, you know, possibly address that, the, the U-turn or whatnot through that area.
Have you talked to them about an overhead that would be...
An overhead, that would actually go across the highway?
Uh-huh.
Uh, no, but...
Or be, may, maybe even across Front Street, the beginning?
We could, although it creates challenges with the traffic signals and whatnot that are there and the S turn with the highways, although it's not impossible. It's probably something that we might want to take on, you know, possibly we can do some sort of a gateway sign within this project. And then we take on that as a part of a different project with the S turn and, and redesigning that. I'd also like to comment on that this project went before the planning commission this last Thursday. Uh, they approved the design as well.
Great.
They did have some concerns as to the H Street intersection here. So, their recommendation was to put some sort of a, a traffic device there. Uh, our suggestion was a four-way stop.
At H?
At H.
Are there questions or clarifications?
On the crosswalks, um, have you considered the, the lighted crosswalks for at night?
Uh, yes, we have.
More expensive.
Uh, they're more expensive, but the time to do it is, is now. Um, I, we definitely wouldn't want to do it, I don't think, on every intersection because there is some, some maintenance costs. But possibly on some key ones such as H Street, we could put them in. We'll also want to go with, with some sort of a colored crosswalk here. And so those details will be brought up for the council as well, with the idea that the colored crosswalks could then carry into the downtown, creating some sort of that continuity between your park and your downtown and, and Front Street.
I like it. I like the idea of bringing downtown into Front Street.
Yes.
Just a comment. Also, I was just telling Bob that, you know, these memorials down there, anytime you're in town, you can, all the way from Pacific, you can see down H Street, you know? And so to be able to sort of see something eye-catching besides a beautiful ocean view, I mean, it'd be great. I mean, you're just gonna pull people off of those roads.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. Is there public comment? Mr. Salisbury. Welcome.
I'm wondering, uh, where the bike lane...
There's, there are actually bike lanes that are, that are showing just slightly outside here as well. These will also be, uh, so there's bike lanes right along there as well as these are, these are class one trails, so they'll, should be wide enough for both.
Specifically where the, uh, the roundabout?
At B Street here, so the, so you have your, your class one trail. I think it's right, I think it's right over against the, against the road here. So, it's, there will be enough room for a bike lane as this is an important route.
Where it links up with the, uh, lighthouse bike trail?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, so it'll come right around here and then I'll take you right around the S curve. It's hard to...
Thank you.
And there was conversation at the workshop about continuing the harbor, uh, trail, bike trail along Howe Drive and then bringing it over to this roundabout and hooking up.
Part of the coast to Crest Trail.
Um, I know right now where we have our bus, buses stopping, the, uh, there's really not room for them. If they park where the, where the bus stop is, they're actually sitting halfway into that oncoming or into that traffic lane. Or if we could address that.
But there is that bike trail that goes, uh, on the other side of the bus stop where you, you go over the, the little walking bridge. That's where I ride my bike.
Yeah, there's bus parking only and there's a divider there. It's on the map. It's divided already. It's a safety zone for the buses. See right here?
There it is.
It's a safety zone. It's out of the park, it's out of the lane.
Yeah, and they, they park and they stick out into the lane as it is now. I wonder if we could go in...
That's what this is.
That's what they're doing.
And we're also working with Mark Walls of the Redwood Coast Transit. And, you know, we have engaged him and he's, he's informed us of a number of buses that might be there at any one time and sort of the bus schedule. So, yeah, he's on board with the project and, and to make sure that there is enough room for all the buses.
Really not real. And, uh, and I'd like to see, uh, some drinking fountains and of course trash cans out there. And I really love the, the old concrete redwood trash cans. Trash can inside of it. They're just so camouflaged. And, uh, and in our wind, you don't gotta worry about them blowing down. And I know they cost less than the, like, probably $700 a piece for those bear-proof ones that are all rotted all around town now. And, uh, I really like the idea with the armed services. Let's see. The high contrast bird matter all over them, yeah. The lighthouse, I'd, I'd really like to see, uh, uh, the lighthouse being incorporated into that where the whale is and everything. Definitely, there's our lighthouse. I see a lot of people coming to town and they're asking, where's the lighthouse? It's really hard to find it, you know? It's almost like, where's Walmart?
Thank you, Jesse. Is there other public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Did you wanna, um, have them make any of the, of the changes you mentioned or, cause this is gonna go to design?
Uh, if, if, uh, Eric is indicating that we have adequate space for the vendors in the street parking there, I'm, I'm happy with that.
I just was, you had, you had mentioned the straight park, the straight line, the straight sidewalk, H Street on, down here.
Right, between E Street and, uh, G Street.
I think it's...
Yeah, I think the, the reason for that is to put the sidewalk right next to the parking so you can possibly park your car, get onto the sidewalk and then enter into the park instead of walking across, you know, a strip or something like that. So, if you didn't do that, you should create some sort of an entry point into the park, whereas this creates sort of a, a, a smooth entry off the parking area.
Yeah.
The vendors could be either in here or they could be in the park, cause the power pedestals would be right on the edge there. So, you could facilitate either one. And we would work with the Chamber to figure out how they wanted to...
If they, if they were on the street as they are now, the Front Street could remain open because there's a divider there. It could remain open all day long. So, people could come and go and, uh, maybe even more parking then.
Well, you might want to think about the power of the median, because you don't want people facing out and, you know, lined way across the street.
Yeah. But you know, we don't, the vendors we have now are not gonna fill that whole line by the B. They only fill one block now.
How many did you have this year?
There was like 12 vendors.
Did they, I think they ran two blocks, didn't they, Janine? So, it would be similar to, to the layout we have now.
I was at G and I think it went all the way to E though.
Yeah.
So, it would be, would be in the same scenario.
There you go.
Same thing happens for the car.
Yeah.
I would move to approve the conceptual design of Front Street and authorize staff to proceed with plans and specifications.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Uh, yes. So, that, uh, is approved unanimously, uh, five to nothing. Thank you very much. Uh, great job by the entire team.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for helping them.
Pleasure.
Did, uh, Rich second that? Catherine?
Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to, uh, item number 14. Uh, consider and approve the, proposed pedestrian improvements along Stampway and Play Street, and give direction to the staff as the architectural style of the improvements.
Sylvia? We have one more presentation to, to give, so, this time while we're waiting for the screen to come down again, I would like to invite Jim back up for the vote.
For karaoke.
For karaoke again. Uh, I can tell you a little bit about this project. This project is for pedestrian improvements along Stampway and Play Street. And this is a very unique opportunity that we have as a city. The, the RHS group received the $5 million labor grant for the tsunami disaster fund. And what this does is it's going to employ somewhere around 200 people throughout the next six months or so to perform labor to help mitigate some of the tsunami damage as well as mitigate mitigation measures for future events. So, with this project, it really has a dual purpose. Number one, Play Street, Stampway, they run right through our beachfront park, the park that we were just talking about, that's adjacent to Front Street. Within this park, there is the visitor center, there's, which is also the cultural center, there's the Fred Nitter Pool, there's Kid Town, there's all the picnic areas throughout the park, all the park uses. Currently, there are not any pedestrian improvements there. We do not have sidewalks that connect each of these facilities or access ramps. So, with this project that we have before you tonight, we'll do, well, it'll create these pedestrian improvements through here. The dual purpose of it, and why it fits in so great with the tsunami workforce crew that we currently have available to the city, is that these pedestrian improvements will also allow for safe egress out of this low-line area. Now, we've all been to the classes, if you're in the beachfront park area or in the, you know, the low-line areas of even downtown, and a cascade of seduction zone hits, and the earthquake comes and you fall down, you need to head to high ground. So, with this project, I'll bring up the, bring up the slide for this project. So, this is basically a vicinity map of where the proposed pedestrian improvements are. So, the brown represents the proposed sidewalk areas, and the blue represent access ramps that we'll be putting in. So, what this project will do, though, is it'll create a safe egress route out of the low-line areas. So, what we're proposing, and what we brought before the Planning Commission, is that instead of just normal gray sidewalks, we have the opportunity to use some very diverse skills within the tsunami workforce as there currently unemployed people throughout our town, and our town, as we know, is full of very talented people. Well, a few members of this crew have experience in stamped concrete. So, what we wanted is, we wanted this project to tie into the Front Street project. And as you saw in the Front Street project, throughout the shoreline area, there's proposed to have boardwalk stamped sidewalks, as you saw in some of those 3D photos that we, that I showed you. So, those sidewalks would then tie in to these sidewalks, which would take you down Stampway, and it would create that continuity that we're looking for within this area. It would also help create sort of your beach feel as you're walking down a boardwalk to go to the beach. Um, you'll see that there'll be new accesses put along the, the sidewalk that goes to the pool, that goes to the cultural center, so it'll be accessible for everybody. So, that in a nutshell is the basic concept of the project. We're very fortunate, last Thursday, this went before the local transportation commission, and they approved funding this project for $40,000 using TDA funds. So, those funds are dedicated to just pedestrian improvements, so they are gonna supply the materials. And the RHS grant, with city supervision and help with layout and design and, you know, some compliance, we'll be able to have free labor on this project as well. So, it's really just a win-win-win for the community. So, this is what the boardwalk possibly could look like. This is an image of boardwalk stamped sidewalks. So, we're working with, with the concrete supplier, they'll be able to add some sort of a tan color. We're talking with stamp providers as well, and they're going over the possibilities that we have as far as textures and different things. So, this could possibly be what it might look like down through that area. There are different options that you can go with, you know, boardwalk stamped isn't the only thing. You could have a brick stamped or cobble stamped, but I think this was the one that really fits the mold the best for what we want within our area. We've talked about it with the Drake Haglin Group, they like it as well, and, uh, yeah, we're ready to, ready to move forward with this.
Very good. I would like to salute, uh, the executive director of LTIC, Tamara Layton, and, and the LTIC board for voting that money. Uh, for us.
Thank you.
What's, what's the timeline on this? 'Cause we're not gonna have that crew forever, so...
We're not gonna have the crew forever. They, within the grant, each employee can make, I believe, $12,000. And so, once they make the $12,000, then their time is, is basically up. So, the time is really now for this project. We have a lot of the, a lot of the current crew that we have has this experience that we want, so we wanted to get right on this, which is why we took it to LTIC as, as quick as what we did. We went ahead and took it to the Planning Commission an hour before the council. So, really, the sooner the better on it. Um, we're working with the Coastal Commission, 'cause this is within the coastal zone, so we've applied for the permits and, and whatnot. So, we expect those to clear in the next week or so, as we've, we've worked with the coastal staff, and although it doesn't get an direct exemption, there is such thing as called a de minimis waiver, and so they're gonna try to push forward with that, so we've applied for that.
Do you have to bid for the concrete, or...
What we're...
Will that take time?
Well, what we're doing for the concrete is we're gonna get, receive quotes from the different concrete companies that can meet our specifications.
Okay.
And we'll go that route with it.
I had one question. Um, I was just down in Long Beach and was walking, um, on a boardwalk similar, that was... Huh?
I said it's a nice one.
Yeah. Um, and in some places, um, I think it was stamped concrete, and it was cracked, kind of meandering cracks through it. And I, there must, they must have been engineers behind me that were walking, 'cause they were talking about the actual material used, and it was, anyway, I just, it made me think about that when I saw this. Is that area maybe different than how...
Well, stamped concrete, and we're actually discussing this today with, uh, stamp manufacturing as well as the tsunami workforce crew. Stamped concrete does provide a challenge, because with, with your normal gray concrete that you don't stamp, you can put your weekend plane joints in it, and you put them every five feet or so, and it creates your concrete squares. And the one thing about concrete is it's gonna shrink and it's gonna crack, guaranteed. So, what you do is you put the control joints in, and it cracks there, and that way the average person doesn't notice the crack, because it's right in where you wanted it to crack. With stamped concrete, you're gonna run through, and you need to put your stamps every foot, and so it's hard to get those control joints in. So, what we're talking about doing is we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll do our pour, which would maybe be somewhere around maybe 75 feet of pour, go ahead and stamp it all, and then come back within 24 hours. And now that we know exactly where that board line is, we'll actually come back through and cut it. And that's one thing nice about having the labor force, is we really don't have the, the excess expense, 'cause it's just a matter of running through and putting those saw joints in, and then it'll crack on those saw joints.
So, if you have to do it within 24 hours, does weather affect that at all?
Weather, weather does affect this whole project, just in general with, you know, the, any concrete pour.
Be out, we'll be out there with umbrellas while you're putting those?
We do have a large labor force, so yes, they can hold up some viseline.
Well, Ms. Shalung was on the, uh, Long Beach boardwalk, I was on the San Diego boardwalk. And, uh, it was very uneven, because it was actually heavy timber, and people were tripping on it constantly. Uh, but in, in reference to the boardwalk in Long Beach, perhaps they didn't do the right, uh, base for that boardwalk and/or the wire mesh or the rebar that goes in the concrete. So, it could be a number of things.
Thank you. I think it'll look awesome.
Any questions by the council, clarifications? Any public discussion, comments? Okay, back to the council.
Real quick, members of the council, I'd like to discuss another project that the tsunami workforce crew is gonna help the city with, and that is actually with our B Street pier. So, we're gonna use their labor, and they're gonna help us with some, some maintenance work, in which we're going to re-nail all the planks on the B Street pier, possibly redo the, the top rail of this as well. Um, it, it's one of these unique opportunities that, that we have to take advantage of. So, the spikes alone, there's gonna be somewhere around 11,000 spikes that we're gonna put throughout this. Each spike has to be pre-drilled and then hammered in with a sledgehammer. So, we're very lucky to have this labor force. Um, to give the council somewhat of a, of a heads up, though, this is gonna cost somewhere around $3,500 just for the spikes, which is gonna come out of the park's budget. I think we can, we can work within the budget throughout the year, but, but we are making every effort that we can to take advantage of this labor force.
But that'll preserve the pier, too.
Exactly, it's, yeah, it's not a...
It has to be done.
Not a question, yeah, it's just a matter of when we're gonna do it, and...
It's a good investment.
Trust me, now is the time.
Thanks, Eric.
Very good. Okay, back to the council.
I'll move for approval of a budget adjustment to increase the parks line item and the parks revenue item by the amount of $40,000, and to adopt the boardwalk-style, uh, stamp. Call for the stamp.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
I missed the second, 'cause I was typing in his specific... Thank you. Okay, so, councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Uh, yes. So, that passes unanimously also, five to nothing. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item number 16, uh, which is consider and approve the designation of, uh, voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference September 21st to the, to the 23rd in San Francisco. Last year, Ms. Shalung, uh, represented the council and the city in San Diego, if I already talked about it.
Was it last year?
And, uh, this year it's at San Francisco, and we have to have it in, I think, uh, near the end of, uh, August of who our delegate would be from a voting standpoint with an alternate. So, uh, I have proposed to attend, uh, and, uh, proposed Catherine, uh, as, uh, Mayor Protem is a alternate, and...
So moved.
Mr. Plaza is up here, but he would not be an alternate, so...
You know, I, I've already made reservations. I can be the third person if you want.
Okay. Mr. Enya can, can be the third person.
Yes.
And there actually, uh, an issue has come up that I might, uh, due to business, have to be out of town at that week, uh, but I, I won't go until much closer to that date.
Correct.
Okay, so, um...
You only need one person to be there for voting, so you only get one.
But they, but they wanted alternates, right, in case somebody couldn't be their backup?
Right, right.
Okay, so, do we need to vote on that, Mr. Black?
Um, I'm not sure you need to, but it, I think that's the way that we've done it in past years, so I would continue that.
Yeah, it has to be a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to send a resolution, and you have to actually bring that resolution with you, or you have to send it in ahead of time, I think, actually.
Exactly.
To be able to vote at the onsite conference.
Um, well, then I would suggest that you treat it as direction to staff to return to you with a resolution at your next meeting.
Okay. So, direct it.
I will withdraw my motion.
Very good. Okay, we'll move to, uh, city council items, legislative matters. Uh, Janine, anything offhand?
No, just that, um, we're waiting, awaiting, um, the fate of RDAs, um, basically on a legal front, and in the meantime, as I, um, said earlier, um, we are meeting with the county auditor again, um, so that we can provide you with information about how to go forward, um, with a recommendation. If legislation doesn't halt things, um, the status quo, or actually, what, what was in the past, prior to June 29th. That's all I have right now.
That's enough.
That's enough.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Enya, reports?
I attended the, uh, LTIC meeting, and, uh, where we approved the, uh, this money for the sidewalks for the park, and also went to the bid meeting last week, and that's about it.
Very good. Ms. Murray?
Yes, I attended the IGRC meeting. We had kind of a small turnout, didn't we, Bill? I think there were four of us, maybe? Uh, but, um, Terry McKeon Ooster was there from Rural Human Services, and she emphasized the, um, fact that, that the $5 million grant that they received does not cover materials, it's for labor only. Nevertheless, I think we found some very creative ways to leverage, uh, that, uh, money for wages and, and help people with getting jobs, with, um, buying materials and, and, um, through the local transportation commission, which I also attended, where we authorized the $40,000 to the city for materials. Um, the, um, the, and we also, at that meeting, at the local transportation commission meeting, adopted, um, the regional transportation plan, which Front Street is a priority. I also attended the Donald, Downlark Solid Waste Authority meeting, the, um, senior center board meeting today, and I attended for a brief time the Preserve Our Pool Suites by the Sea fundraiser last Saturday.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Shalung?
Um, attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, as well as our almost weekly ad hoc committee meeting, um, as we move forward. The first, um, few weeks of garbage service, the new garbage services has gone pretty well, um, and, you know, little bugs here and there, but I think the fact that Recology implemented their plan about three weeks early really helped to make it a smooth transition. Um, and so, those, that, that is moving forward well. Um, and I think that's about all I've done in the past week.
Okay. Ms. Westfall?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to compliment all the cleanup that's going around the city. It's really making a difference. Um, I attended the bid meeting and was very excited to hear Mel, the, uh, general manager for, for Frontier, explain some of the programs that they're gonna be bringing in. I think it's very exciting and very promising.
Just, just for clarification, Frontier is, uh, taking place of Verizon downtown.
Uh, another thing is that, uh, the bus service stopped to the senior centers, so some of the seniors are not getting there for lunch. Um, there are volunteers that are temporarily picking up seniors and taking them home. Um, it's a real concern of mine, and I hope that...
Which bus service?
The, uh...
Redwood Coast Transit.
Senior bus transfer. I don't remember what it's called.
Oh, senior bus, well, it's, it was a, a funding issue, and we're trying to resolve that.
Okay, good. Um, I was asked to attend two meetings for Mayor Slert while he was out of town, but per the terms of my censure back in September of 2009, um, it mentioned that I was, um, relieved and removed as a city representative and/or alternate on all the committees, and so, um, I think we need some clarification here about, do you think that the censure was lifted, Mr. Slert?
I believe it was.
Um, let me check with city attorney Bob Black. Do you think the censure was lifted?
Yeah, I think the censure resolution didn't have an expiration in it, but when Mayor Slert made the motion to adopt the resolution, he put a limiting date in his motion of one year from the date of adoption, which would have caused it to expire in November of 2010.
Well, there seems to be a little discrepancy there, because I got an email from you, Mr. Black, saying that, um, in addition to Rob Butler's email, saying in December 3rd, 2010, the censure is still in place, and you saying it would take a procedure that would be familiar to a motion second and majority vote to pass. I just would like clarification on that, and maybe for good order's sake, uh, have a resolution that officially lifts the censure.
Um, I think that most, that both Mr. Butler and I had reviewed the resolution and didn't realize that there was limiting language in the motion itself, which I think, um, was a mistake on our part, but was also clarified within a very short period of time, because I advised Mayor Slert to offer you positions at the, in January of 2011, which I believe he did. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure what happened with that, but, uh, the, I, I think you were given some mistaken advice based on just the language of, of the censure resolution and not on the language of... of the motion, which there was kind of this nagging idea that somewhere there was a one year limitation, and it wasn't until we went back and looked at the minutes, we went back and looked at the minutes and found then Councilman Slert's motion was a one-year motion. So I don't, it's up to the council whether they want to adopt a new resolution repealing that, or if they want to just stand on the original motion, which was a one-year limitation.
Right, and at, at the time we adopted the resolution, we clearly stipulated based on a suggestion from council member Burns that we have it be time limited and not be without an ending date. So there was a lot of discussion around that before we adopted the resolution. And you were there, Ms. Westfall.
Is that answer your questions?
I think she's asking about having the censure lift, what that means for her, if, if she's no longer censured. And it was my understanding that you offered for her to be, become involved with the council again this year under your year as mayor, and that you gave her some options for consideration, and that she did not follow through with that, and that's why you didn't appoint her.
That's correct.
Well, what I have here is a letter from Mayor Slert dated December 4th, 2010. Hello, Donna, I was contacted and copied by city manager Rod Butler regarding your email inquiring regarding 2010, 2011 council member committee assignments. I had not heard anything from you prior to making my council committee assignments. My understanding is that assignment to various committees by the mayor of council members is not automatic and is not a council right, but rather an honor. But given your late inquiry and interest, I'd be happy to review and reconsider my list of committee assignments. In my willingness to revise my appointments to include you, and because of feedback we were receiving when you were serving prior to the censure, I simply request that you acknowledge and agree to the following principles. When serving on a committee, a council member is there to represent the city and/or the city council as a whole, the committee proceedings are not the place to promote personal projects, no matter how beneficial they may be. A council member is expected to report regularly to the entire council on the activities of the committee he or she serves on. If you're willing to indicate your agreement with these principles, an email would be fine, I'm prepared to move forward some appointments for you. And then I responded by saying thank you for your email and letter dated December 4th, and my response was dated December 6th, 2010. To clarify, I was asking city manager Rod Butler about the censure, the status of the censure and whether or not it had been lifted. I was not at that time asking specifically about committee assignments, but allow me to state that the three principles you have written down certainly make good sense. May I suggest that at some later date, preferably in January, when I'm back in town, that we go over the specifics so there's no misunderstanding. We would need to nail down some definitions. We would need to come to some understanding as to whether or not representing the city and/or the city council as a whole means, quote, "in lockstep," unquote, with actions, policies, and procedures that in my view are more in concert with corruption. I have yet to find the correct venue to address my concerns other than a court of law. If we can determine a procedure for addressing those types of situations that allow for the freedom of expression guaranteed under the law, then I think we have something to talk about. Also keep in mind that under public comment, I am allowed to express my opinions as a private citizen. In the interest of preventing double or conflicting standards, it's really important, we hammer these things out. As you're already aware, many of these things are already addressed in the code of ethics. I just want to make it clear that everyone will be treated the same, and I'm not being singled out. Again, thank you for opening the door to resolving these issues. So in my mind, the censure being lifted was not clear.
So subsequently, it's been clarified.
I, I would, my personal opinion would, if, if I were reading that letter, would mean that you think that we are corrupt, and therefore you would not be representing the best interests of the council as a representative of the city.
I think there are some corrupt practices that have been taking place. I've brought them to this council and to prior councils, and those were disregarded, particularly in the respect of what was taking place on the wastewater treatment plant and the falsifying of payroll by Colburn Electric and paying Wardstover Engineering for labor enforcement or labor compliance when he wasn't an officer and he didn't do his job. And so those things did not set well with me or the public.
Right, but those were your opinion, and they were never proven.
I beg to differ with you.
We understand there was a labor compliance issue with Colburn Electric.
Yes, and it was proven, and there was $165,000 penalty that would have come to the city instead of the director of industrial relations had we had a working labor compliance program.
So I guess the question is, we were talking about reports, and you brought up the issue of participating, and had it been cleared up, or has it been resolved? And I think the answer is it has been resolved. No other action is apparently required at this time to resolve it.
So in your mind, the censure is lifted?
I believe it was just based on the, the wording of the origi, original motion or resolution.
It was never in the resolution, and that's why I want, I asked for clarification, that a resolution be made to officially lift the censure.
So, and I think Mr. Black clarified tonight, just now, that the, the wording in the motion did talk to the issue of, for one year, and that after the end of that one year, it automatically expires. I think he felt differently at the time with Mr. Butler when he responded to you.
Could we have that resolution pulled up so we can, everyone can read it for themselves, and especially Ms. Westfall?
Sure, but let me, let me just say that this, we were all present at the same meeting, and the motion was the motion. It was voted on, I think it was a four to one vote. The vote and the motion itself were recorded in the minutes. So it's not so much a question of a legal opinion, it's just bringing to everybody's memory the fact of exactly how it was done.
Right, so that's why I thought a hard copy might be useful.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, we can circulate another copy of the censure resolution. I think what councilwoman Westfall was asking is whether there's some formal action that's needed to, to clarify that it's no longer in effect. And I think the formal action was actually the original motion. And I think that Mr. Butler and myself, both briefly for a period, I would say of a few days, had neglected to go back to the minutes and look at the actual motion, but I think that was corrected fairly promptly.
But I was, I would also concur with Ms. Shalong's assessment that the response that Ms. Westfall gave to me was not one, one in the spirit of cooperation, but it, it seemed to me that she had got some legal input from somebody or was actually raising bigger legal issues. And I thought my letter to you was very simply stated, just saying, you know, I'm just asking you to, that you'll always represent the, the interest, the best interest of the citizens in very basic kinds of, of issues that seemed just automatic to me and apparently weren't to you.
So the other thing, the other thing I might mention...
She's also suing us again.
Yeah, I mean, the issue that's being discussed is very, very squarely in front of the court by way of Ms. Westfall's most recent amended complaint. I think some of the words that were used tonight are find their way into that complaint per se. So I'm sure that she will have the redress that she's looking for from the courts, or at least a resolution of that redress, so.
Is there any further questions? On my report, I also attended the board bid, the bid board meeting, and was excited that Frontier was there, and that they're hoped to be basically fully online in September with their new programs and their new shop for the customers. I think it's a, a good thing for downtown. And then I also attended Elk Valley Rancheria Utilities Ad Hoc Committee with my colleague Ms. Shalong, and then had a week vacation, so back to reality.
Regarding bid, too, someone forwarded me just as a regional issue, that Medford has an urban renewal district, and that since 1988, its own business members have contributed $72 million to their economy. And they are considering eliminating that district and forming an economic investment district where the business owners will be assessed 15 cents per square foot of their office size, and it is the business people that are doing this. And I'll find out more information, but I thought that's, that was an interesting kind of comparison that's kind of happening just across the, the border.
Very good. Okay, no city manager directives at this time, and so we will be adjourned. Our next regular meeting will be August 1st, 2011 at 5:00 PM. Thank you.